All right, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. You're going to call the June 11th meeting agreeing to be planning zoning commission to order. Those who are able, please rise for the pledge.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do a check with the commission on the chair, Mark Lockwood. Start from my right.
Eric Lukin Deal, member.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Bob Lovett, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Brennan Shaheenan, member.
Chris, you're on Zoom?
Christine Shaheenan, member.
Okay. So the commission checks in full, and I don't see any alternates with us today. So we won't be seating any because we don't have any on the evening. Okay, next on the agenda is amendment four, public session. Does anyone in public wish to speak to the commission on a planning zoning matter that's not in the agenda or subject to a public hearing? Please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? No one for public session. We'll close public session. Next is action on the minutes of May the 28th. Took a look at them. I don't have any comments, any?
No comment.
No comment.
If there's no comment, I'll take the motion.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor?
I abstain.
Hi, I don't abstain. I say hi. I agree.
Okay. We have all in favor, except Commissioner Shaheenan, Commissioner Lovett abstain. Minutes passed. Next on the agenda, we have three public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is an application for site plan modification for a building addition on Salmon Brook Street. I'll have Vice Chair Myers please give the call to the hearing.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a site plan modification for a 3,000-square-foot building addition for property located at 557 Salmon Brook Street, C2 Zone, File Z-12-24. Any interested parties who are here?
See applicant or the representative here?
Robert DeLuca with CLA Engineers. Yeah. Okay. What's the best place to put this?
Where's the place in Marcusville?
Where's the camera?
Mike, would you like to see the?
As close to the microphone as he can get.
Facing.
Yes.
Yes.
So for the record, Robert DeLuca with CLA Engineers.
Mr. Frank, I just had a procedural question. Abby, I noticed in the staff memo, we have the building addition, but you made other comments. I believe some of the other items that are in here are separate special permits now covered by the application of the public hearing notice. So we want to clarify.
Yes. So the outdoor storage issues, specifically the two Conex trailers shown on the site plan, as well as some of the landscape piles, are expected to be handled separately under a separate special permit application.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just site plan.
Go ahead. I just wanted to clarify that. So if you could just explain a little bit about the application, the addition, and exemption you're asking for as well.
Sure. So this is 557 Salmon Brook Street. Existing parcel is 1.4 acres. It's in a C2 zone. No wetlands on the parcel. There's an existing 6,000-square-foot warehouse-type building with an office in it currently. It houses a residential irrigation company, which uses about 4,000 square foot. The remaining 2,000 square foot is used for a landscaping company for storage of equipment and materials. The site's serviced by a septic and a well. And there is paving. The shaded area is paving. In front of the building out to the street, there's also a gravel laydown area to the right. The proposed addition is 3,000 square foot. It's this box right here. And if you've been to the site, there are two Conex boxes in that proximate area now. Architecture is similar to the existing building. It's a gable roof, sealed building. There's proposed, with this proposal, we're delineating the parking. This site plan was developed in 2003. And I do want to note, when this site plan was developed in 2003, this proposed addition area was shown. And I'm only bringing it up because it gets into when we looked at the drainage system and the septic system. So what's proposed as part of the, in addition to the building itself, is some delineating the parking, adding a handicap parking space, relocating those Conex boxes. There's an office trailer on site that will then be eliminated also. As far as the septic B100A application was submitted, it health comment and approved. And as far as the drainage, currently the drainage is collected and connected to an infiltration system in the parking area. We felt this was probably sized for the future addition. We confirmed that with drainage counts and submitted it to your town engineer. We verbally spoke to him. He agreed with our methodology. I'm not sure if he had quite time enough to review the counts, though. We're requesting a waiver to keep this gravel area in front of the new addition. It's a waiver from section 7.2, which is service treatment. It's an all area, supposed to be paved with asphalt. We're requesting a waiver for a portion of this to remain gravel. That's due to the fact that our parking spaces, the required parking spaces, are in the paved area, and we don't anticipate a lot of traffic in this area. I think that was about it. I won't move to any questions you have.
What questions, Abby? Have you had several staff comments?
Oh, yeah. I can go through those. I'll go through your comments. Abby's first comment was regarding updating the sign detail, which we did. You saw that we submitted our plans this morning. Second comment was to clarify the existing gravel area to remain, which we provided some notes here related to this. And we dashed that, dotted that gravel area, so it's clear. The third question was to make sure we did submit a waiver, that it did require a waiver for that service treatment, which we did submit a waiver letter. The fourth comment was related to accurately showing that a proposed wall pack light was being proposed at the rear of the building, which we called out on the plan. Fifth comment was to update our plan to show a recently installed stockade fence along the northernly boundary, which we showed. That was it. The sixth comment had to do with those storage areas that you want to address separately.
Any others that are up to date that you can work in your show as well?
Yes. Yep.
So Abby, just the items one, two, three, four, five on your staff memo, we can, those are the ones we can address this evening?
Yes. And then, as mentioned, the town engineer has had discussions about the drainage calculations. He just hasn't had an opportunity to review anything. But I had a conversation before he left for vacation, and he didn't have any major concerns, just wanted an opportunity to finalize his review and make sure that any outstanding issues he identifies are addressed prior to finalization of the plans.
Because we can do the other site plan, reduce those.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any specific questions, Commissioner? No questions. This is an extension of existing approved use scripts.
Yes. Yep. So there will be office space and then storage.
The offices remaining there?
Correct. And there's a proposed office space in the building.
The commission doesn't have any questions? Open it up. Commissioner Cheney, I'm sorry, I always forget people on Zoom. You have any questions?
I do not.
Speak up if you do, because I forget. You're up there sometimes. Any members of the public wish to speak on this application? Please come forward. Let's see, members of the public, anyone on Zoom? Anything further from the commission?
I guess I have a question for the engineer. The catch basin that's in the?
Come back, please. Could you come back after I've turned off the microphone?
The catch basin that's in the gravel area that you want to leave is gravel?
Yes.
And how do you prevent that from being full sedimentation? It's just all exposed dirt all around it?
Well, it does have a sump, and the sump would have to be cleaned up periodically. We could provide or propose some type of hooded outlet to help with that situation with the sand and gravel.
There's been a filter fabric in there since day one.
Yeah.
And that area's always been kind of exposed?
That area is, I mean, for the 20 years, right? Since 2003, when this was, I will comment that the soils there, this very coarse sand, we, in order to satisfy the engineers' comments, we did permeability tests, which test how quickly the gravel receives water. And you could just pour a hose in the ground, and it never fills up. So it's all this extremely coarse sand. Had a permeability rate of, I think, 100 to 150 feet per day.
I believe right across the street, there's a sand and gravel pit.
Yeah.
So I assume the structure of the soil is the same.
So when you look at the size of this system, it's not very big, but it's just, everything just goes into the ground immediately.
Okay.
I'm sure the gravel surface is similar.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Anything else from the applicant? Okay. We'll set the pace there. Okay, the commission will close the public hearing. It's been up to 65 days. It comes to a decision, but we'll be discussing it later on in our agenda. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is application for one lot subdivision on K Street. Vice Chair Myers, you please give the call to the hearing.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a one lot subdivision for Lot 1-20/66/37-2, known as 200K Street property, adjacent to 186K Street to the south, R4A Zone, File P-2-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear, and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file, and the community development offer.
See applicant or the representative here?
Before we get started, I have a question. Abby, in the last sentence of your memo, you say that given it is unlikely that staff will be able to review the revised plan in time for the June 11th meeting, it is suggested that no further action be taken until a future meeting. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I had the same question.
I'll come on and clarify some more. Please introduce yourself.
Yep. Matt Reel, Brooklyn Developers, 96 Gayville Trace, Burlington, Connecticut.
Before we get started, I do want to echo the commissioners with, I just got these plans.
I understand.
Half an hour ago. I have not looked at them. I don't think anyone else in the commission staff has yet. Today's hearing, I agree with Commissioner Lukin Deal, Commissioner Cheney, and staff is that we are not really going to get into the plans, but we do have, we'll open the hearing, because I think there's some staff comments, right?
Yeah.
So any, you want me to stand and answer?
Do you want to just go over his?
Yeah.
Why don't you go through what you want to do? We might not get into details in the plan, but go through what you want to do and explain to me.
Well, I mean, okay, so you guys will see in the plan, it's just a single lot subdivision, very level lot. As far as drainage, shouldn't be any issues. There's just really minor slopes at best. And wetlands, others, none on the property. And I mean, that's, it's pretty simple subdivision, so decent length in driveway. That's about it, really. I don't know, any questions?
You're taking, you had a first cut on the big lot, and now you're taking the remaining portion and doing a subdivision on that. Is that correct?
Sort of, but, I mean, yes, you're correct, but it's sort of two parcels, if you will.
Now, just going through the staff, you had a large parcel, is that correct?
Yeah.
You get a first cut, it's not considered a subdivision, it's just a division.
Correct.
Now you're taking the other lot, the 20 acres, I believe it is, and you're buying that in here.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that's with, basically, it's, it's just the contract that we have with the home in that way. But it's, but as.
Abby, what comments you do have to move to remove?
Yeah.
You have the applicant here.
Yeah, so for a little bit more information, so yes, this was originally 186K Street. I believe the property owner came in at least once, maybe two times, to discuss development of this piece. So that there was a first cut on the property. So the northern part was sold off. This is the 20 acres remaining. The applicant, the application before the commission is seeking a five-acre building lot, which, if you look at the plans, it looks like a rear lot. However, it meets the definition of a conventional lot, where the lot square is placed. And that's important, because rear lots aren't allowed in the R4A zone. And the applicant, or the property owner, had originally applied for a text amendment to allow rear lots in the zone, which was denied. So they're looking at a five-acre lot. The house itself will be set pretty far back from the road. And the remaining piece, it's my understanding, as shown on the plans, is no improvements are shown. It's to remain as an agricultural lot, not an approved building lot. As the applicant stated, this application did go before the Wetlands Commission. There are wetlands on the 20-acre piece. However, where the house and the improvements are to be located on the lot to be split off is outside of the upland review area. So no permitting was needed for that specific house development. I had a series of comments to ensure that it complies with the subdivision regulations. The town engineer also had some questions and comments regarding the shape of the lot, which you can see in his comments, and making sure that it meets the regulation. So again, we haven't had an opportunity to look at this in great detail. One of the things I do want to point out, as noted in the memo, that applicant is proposing to pay a fee in lieu of open space. So this was something that was discussed at length previously, because the value of the land had not yet been established by the assessor. So they did hire an appraiser, or appraiser, in April, and came back with a value of $160,000. So if the commission is inclined, 6% of the fair market value would be $9,600, which would be the fee in lieu of open space. So if the commission has any questions, I can try and answer them. But again, haven't had an opportunity to review it in great detail with the revisions.
Does the assessor have to get in, concur with that number? How does that?
No, because, so the regulations state that either an appraiser can be hired, or you can use the property card. So there are both options. So given that the appraiser was hired, it is fine to accept that amount.
Do you want to add anything to the party?
I agree with everything Abby said, that she laid it up perfectly.
I think, I don't, I personally don't have any questions. Like I said, I think all those staff comments have to be reviewed to the site plan. But I'm all just, conceptually, does any commissioner have questions?
Not yet.
Not yet. Chris, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. I think I'll wait till the whole property is moved over.
Well, we are a public hearing, and opened, so I will, we are going to continue the hearing, but I will ask if any members of the public would like to speak on the application, please come forward. Sir?
Hi, my name's Phil, and I live at 210 K Street. I reviewed the plot plan at the Community Development Center here in town, and I have no objection to what he's doing there. I think you should be made aware of the situation that is developing on K Street, since this will add to the traffic situation on K Street, and there is a developing problem that is going on. When I moved here 20 years ago, the traffic was much, much less. It has increased two, three, four, five times over. And it's become a problem in so much that with the traffic, there comes a great detriment to the environment and to the safety of the public. I take daily walks on K Street, and I have seen what the traffic has done. There are, there is so much trash, and I'm not talking about just paper. I myself, since the first of the year, have picked up between 300 and 400 beer cans on this road. This is a main cut through between 179 and 219. So you get a lot of commuters. And the development in town, such as Harness Way, and this other huge conglomerate that was allowed to be built here, Tenet, has just added hundreds of cars to our street. And if anybody's going from this area of town southwest, they're going to be coming down my street. And I take my life in my hands now, while I have to take my walk, because I see tire marks where the cars have driven off the road. Every year, when the town puts in the wooden stakes for the plows, before they even snowflakes, first of all, snowflake poles, they're all taken down. Traffic signs have been taken down. Mailboxes have been taken down. There's gouges taken out of telephone poles. I have to be hyper-aware when I walk down that street, because I never know when the next drunk is going to come by and lose control. Now, I know these are commuters, because I find 90% of the cans between Tuesday and Saturday, which means they're thrown out of the cars on the evening commutes from the night before. I find very few on Sunday or Monday. This is a developing problem, and it's not going to get any better. I mean, in a perfect world, I wish that it could be a no-through-traffic road in a forest. And we can't control the building that goes on on the north Canton end, but there have been, I don't know, maybe 15 or 20 houses built in North Canton along this road, Windmill, Ray, and many along K Street. We can't control that, I know. But I fear that Granby is losing its small-town sense, and the development, I mean, I applaud the town in my area, where there's a four-acre minimum. And that's one of the reasons why I don't have any problem with this house being put in. I mean, land is an investment, you know, and people want to develop it, and get their money out of it, and commerce that way, and that's fine. But we have to be aware of the problems that are being incurred by all this development in town. I mean, I moved here for the rural feeling, for the wildlife, for the peace and quiet, for, you know, I came out of Manchester, where when I moved there, it had a smallish-town feel. But by the time I left, I was forced out. I was forced out by all the development, all the, the quality of life has gone down so much. And now I feel my quality of life here in Granby is being affected. I mean, sure, you see Harness Way here, what are they building, 15, 20 houses? But that's 50 or 60 cars. And this other one, the luxury apartments over here, I don't know how many units there, but there's going to be at least 200 or 300 more cars. And we have some alleviation with the redoing of the center of town, which has helped in some matters. It's going to be a short time before it becomes inadequate with what's going on here in town. So, you know, I want you to be made aware that K Street, although minorly impacted by one house, is going to add to an ongoing problem that I see every day. I mean, it's, it really is becoming, and I'm sure there are some here that will confirm what I'm saying, others who live along this street, who have seen the same things, who have noticed it. And if they've noticed it, it's impacted their quality of life, just as it has mine. So I want you to be made aware of this problem, and I'm sure K Street is not the only one. You know, right now, we have Edgerton Street over there. There's a huge house being built now. A sign went up for another lot, and I know there's at least a couple more lots over there that are going to, you know, eventually come on the market. You know, one house, not a problem, but pretty soon they start to add up. And some kind of balance has to be struck, keeping in mind, you know, the landowners and their needs, but also the community and our needs. So thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Ben?
My name is Rosemary Powers. I live on 12 Fielding Woods Road, and I am a budding property owner. And I'm really here with a lot of questions, because I do not understand the two, the subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Committee, on February 27, 2024, approved the subdivision of the 20-acre piece into two lots, to be known as 200K Street. And we have a five-acre lot and a 15-acre lot. And I would like to know who owns the five-acre lot, and who owns the 15-acre lot? I went to the Vision website for Granby, and there was a different owner. So I would like to know, I mean, this is my first question, who owns the five-acre lot, and who owns the 15-acre lot? Can anyone answer that question for me?
So, yeah, so right now, there are no two lots. So it's just that the 20-acre lot, which they're looking to split into two, and the 20-acre lot is owned, it's in a family trust. Stanley Curtis has been before the commission about that piece. So he's the spokesperson for the family, if you will, but it's multiple owners.
So it's owned by the family of Stanley Curtis?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the application for the one lot subdivision is for which parcel? The five acre or the 15 acre?
Ben, there's no, there's no five acre, there's no 15 acre parcel. That's what's before us. There's a 20-acre parcel, and the applicant's asking to subdivide it. That's what we're here for.
Okay. So how many building lots will there be in the subdivision?
It's two lot, the application, may you want to explain the?
Yep. So the application, so you have 20 acres, the applicant is looking to split that into a five-acre lot to build a house, and then the 15 acres would remain in agricultural use for now.
Okay. And then, again, back in February 27, 2024, you require four acres of dedicated open space for this subdivision, which could be in the form of an agricultural easement or a posting of a bond with the town. How is this open space requirement satisfied?
So the applicant has requested that the commission accept a fee in lieu of open space, which is 6%, the fair market value of the land. So that would be $9,600 would be the fee in lieu of open space.
Okay. And that was done by whom?
That's part of the consideration for the application.
That's all part of the application. There's been no action on the subdivision. That's why we're here.
Okay.
The applicant is, the application, and they're asking for a fee in lieu of open space, which is part of the code.
Yeah, it's part of our code.
All right. And there seems to be a huge clearing, probably about 50 feet wide off of K Street, which is looking like a street. And has this clearing been approved for a street?
I read a question, the applicant can address that.
Yeah, that's a question. We'll have the applicant come back up and answer about the clearing.
Okay. And when we, my next question, when we purchased our land 34 years ago from Andrew Mason on Fielding Woods, he told us that our property would be the last house because he could not cross the brook. So he donated the rest of the property to McLean's. And we have observed a clearing that is going on past the brook. So have you changed your restrictions on crossing the wetlands and crossing the brook?
So there was an application approved by Wetlands for forestry activities, and stream crossings are allowed under Wetlands. And again, that's a separate commission, and that's, I believe that's on the adjacent property, that's not pertaining to the 20-acre piece, which is the subject of this application.
Okay. But you are allowing building then, after crossing a brook, crossing a brook and having development?
So this application before the commission for the 5-acre home site does not involve a wetland crossing. There's no wetland crossing shown on the plan.
All right. And going back to 2006, the K Street study, which I think it was the Planning and Zoning Commission that did this study, you maintain that the lot should be four acres because of soil issues, elevation, and the far distance from Granby Public Services. So are you following the 2000? Is this continuing or not? Is this no longer something that you're following from this study of K Street?
Anyway, I don't understand your question. This is a subdivision application for a 5-acre lot with 15 acre. Five acres is more than four, so it still follows the zoning criteria.
Okay. Again, as a resident for 24 years, the developer has purchased all the real rear land from 142 K Street to 200 K Street. It's a total of 159 acres. And my comment is, it's not really a formula for preservation of a unique section of Granby. This is just my comment and my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone on Zoom like to comment? No other members of the public. I'll have the applicant come back up. There was a couple of questions raised by the public. There was a question on a clearing, or you cleared the road or something on the?
Yeah, so there was an application in for clearing, the first cut that we did. Went from Wetlands, it got approved. We're not building a road, we're just building basically a landing to keep the soils from getting into the road as the log trucks leave. That's it.
So to clarify, that's on the adjacent property associated with the Wetlands application for the forestry activities, not the 20-acre lot that's subject to the subdivision?
Totally correct. It's not part of this application at all.
Anything else you want to address?
No, I mean, I just want to mention, look, we've purchased roughly 140 acres. I'm not looking to subdivide it at all. I'm looking to keep it preserved, build my own personal house there. If you took this whole piece that Stanley has, and the agriculture use that he wants, and we've agreed upon, to keep the fields in its natural state, I think that this subdivision is, it couldn't really be much better. I mean, he's getting a small amount of money, considering he could have probably put four, possibly five houses in there if he wanted to. He chose not to. I don't, I think this was very fair use for this park.
Thank you. Anything else from Abby this time? Anything else from the commission? As stated, the plans are going to be reviewed, staff comments, so the public hearing will remain open. The applicant will be back again, continue to our next meeting. Further questions on the proposal will be done at that time. Thank you very much, everyone, for your comments. Okay, next on our agenda is application for a site plan modification for expanded parking on Barn Door Hills. Vice Chair Myers, could please read the call to the hearing?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the T and Z on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. To hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a site plan modification for expanded parking for a farm store property located at 175 Barn Door Hills Road, R2A Zone, file Z-313-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
Is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes. Hi.
Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Chris Perrigan, and I'm one of the owners of the farm store.
And before I forget, we did receive one communication, distributed to the commission.
It's part of the record.
Want to explain a little bit about what they're looking at doing?
Sure. Yeah, we received approval for a special permit last year to open the farm store. And part of that included, part of the requirement was that we have eight parking spots with the potential for overflow of six additional spots, with a total of 14 spots, which is what we've had thus far. And we've quickly exceeded the need for that space. So basically, what we're asking to do is create an additional, just to the south of what exists now as the driveway to the farm store, create an additional entrance that would lead to a field for overflow parking, additional 30 spots, space could absorb it quite easily. And what's currently happening is people come and either are parking on the street on Barn Door Hills Road, if the parking lot is full, which it is most of the time now on the weekends. So we're trying to mitigate that. And also, many people are kind of continuing on to the property and driving around the horse farm. So if we were able to consolidate some of those, some of that overflow into this space, it just make it easier for neighbors and neighbors in the vicinity.
Was there any sort of questions, or any staff comments?
Just a couple items I would like to point out. So it's my understanding that the applicant plans to keep the field grass, so no plans to go down gravel or anything. However, we did have a meeting with Public Works on-site, and they are requesting a paved apron. So there would be a 24, maybe slightly larger, wide paved apron for a portion of that. And then it would turn, you know, maybe a little bit of gravel and then grass into the actual field. And that's a requirement from DPW to protect the edge of road so it doesn't crack, and also to keep any gravel on-site. So if the commission is inclined to approve the application, the applicant would need to submit a driveway permit and be subject to comply with whatever requirement Public Works has. So I just wanted to point that out. But other than that, from my standpoint, I don't have any concern for further comments.
Are you keeping the existing parking that you have?
Yeah.
Just a curious question. Will you do when people pull in there and it's full? How are they going to get out? Is there, are you going to have a way to come around back?
At the end of the?
So they don't get trapped?
Yeah, so there will be a sort of round block at the end. So if they, if they enter and can't find parking, they will be able to loop around and ride.
Who will be able to, is it going to connect back to here, coming around? Like, your plan up there is that if they come in to your store and it's full, will they be able to keep going straight and then?
No. Oh, no, they'd have to come back out. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But my hope is that what will happen is that people will come in here first. I think if we mark this, if this becomes known as the kind of the parking space, people then can access the store this way. But if they go into the existing parking lot now and it's full, they just turn around. Makes it anyway. Yeah.
I just always think about, if it was me and it's full and people are coming in and, yeah, I'm glad you have this problem.
Yeah, me too.
How would you define the parking area? Are you going to fence the whole thing in? Or are you just going to?
So there's an existing, what, it says large paddock.
I see that, yeah.
There. So that is an existing fence line. So that exists. And then to the north is another fence. So we're basically, the field is already, the perimeter is already?
Boxed in?
Yeah.
And how about preventing them from going further?
Yeah, we'll put either a hedging or some sort of chain link to stop them from continuing on to the property. But it's, but just beyond this is another paddock. So you kind of can't, you can't continue to drive there. So just to the west of this is another paddock.
I guess I question it because you, you know, you're looking for how many more spaces? 24? Or how many more spaces are that?
I think that's 17 and 13.
So 20 spaces, but there's room for even more overflow if it's not confined. So your 20 spaces could turn into?
Yeah, it's pretty confined.
Thirty-five.
There's another image.
In the packet, you can sort of make out the far fence.
Yeah, I see that. Yep.
Yeah, there's definitely no way for them to go north or south. And to the west, if we put up some sort of fencing.
Right.
It'll stop them. We also have somebody now who's like a parking attendant, who's out there on the weekends helping people, stopping people from parking where they can't be. So that's somebody's job.
And is the lawn area suitable under wet conditions to support parking for vehicles?
Yeah. I mean, it's very flat. We have horses turned out on adjacent land, and it's not, it's never been issued.
I mean, how long would a lawn last under heavy traffic? You know, you're saying the place is overflowed right now. There's a lot of cars parked on the streets.
It's overflowing on the weekends. Yeah. So the idea is that this would be used as overflow on those busy days, which is currently Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. So it's not seven days a week?
No. Yeah. So the stores open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Thursday, I think we're probably going to be fine with the 14 spots that we have. Friday has gotten busier. Saturdays and Sundays are, we need more space. So yeah, there'd be, it's not seven days a week.
Okay. And I think this is more of a question for you, but the applicant doesn't require any sort of curb cut. He has the appropriate distances, lines of sight, and other items for this particular lot, because he already has two curb cuts.
Yep. So we don't have a maximum number of curb cuts. So that's something that DPW will look at as part of the driveway permit process. When we did need on-site, we did not have any concerns with site line where that proposed driveway is.
Isn't Apple, you okay with the DPW driveway apron?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Our landscape person was there, and he did one of the drawings in his.
Those concern the site distance is too big. That's been addressed.
Yeah.
You guys pretty much addressed my question. The only concern is, like you said, in the inclement weather, I think that's going to turn bad really fast.
Yeah.
Even in a month with their old cars, that there's, you know, what are you going to do in the wintertime? You can't plow it.
Yeah. I mean, what would we do? We would, I'd have to have our, the guy.
Any other thought to maybe making a gravel or doing something with it if it becomes a problem?
For sure. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We would maintain it however we were allowed to. Yeah. The person who is going to install the apron is the person who does all of the landscaping on. And he's done irrigation in all of the fields. And the paddocks start to slope up on that barn door hill. So he's just put in a whole drainage system so that when we get all of that overflow from the hill, the paddocks don't flood. I feel like he'd be able to speak to it and help us address it.
So Commissioner Miller raises a great question, Abby. In the future, this area does require additional structure, maintenance, changes, or otherwise? They're going to have to come back?
Yes. Yeah. So I would, yeah.
It's grass for this permit.
Correct. Yeah. So if that's something that this commission wants to consider as a specific point.
It's grass.
Yes. And I do want to point out, too, we do have other farm stores in town that do have parking on grass areas currently as well.
But they also, if they decided to gravel it or pave it, would probably require drainage and other considerations?
Correct.
And that's a back for a cycle.
Yes. Yep.
That's a, I, but this, you don't need to have a formal site plan for this?
Yeah, I think for this application, this suffices. You know, certainly if there was a plan to do paving and drainage, we'd probably want something more detailed. But for this, I think it's fine.
Well, as Commissioner Myers points out, they would have to come back with that.
We wouldn't pave it. We'd stop using it before we paid it.
Anyone else?
I mean, is there any consideration? You know, I heard you say the word landscaper. You know, anything you can do to beautify, anything with plantings would probably be beneficial for the neighborhood overall, you know, instead of seeing 20 cars, some, anything?
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty beautiful. And they're not, the cars aren't going to be right on the road. So the way it's mapped is, I think that they're going to be consolidated between the fences. But that's certainly a consideration. I mean, we're going to put hedging in between the house and the parking lot.
Okay.
So that there's, that we, you know, that they can maintain their privacy.
Yeah.
But yeah, keeping it, I mean, one of the things I think that's made the store so successful is how considered, how beautiful the garden is, and adherence to the kind of aesthetic of the scenic road there. I mean, that's certainly top of mind for us. And I think it would be doing ourselves a disservice to feel like we're living alongside a parking lot. We also have to make sure that people aren't parking on the road. So.
Right.
But yeah.
I guess the only other concern is looking from this picture on the back side, there are a couple trees that look like it's in the entrance, because I believe this is coming from the back of the lot, of the parking area. And then there's another picture down below, you can see that there actually is, looks like there might be big space getting in there, around a couple of trees.
Spark the photograph, but we walked it out.
I can see that.
Yeah. And there's actually, there's plenty of space there.
Okay. You said it was a little bit so.
And so to Clifford, you don't plan on removing any of those trees?
No. No, no.
And there was some discussion about changing the fence if they needed to get it a little bit wider. Yeah.
We'd steal it from the fence.
Yeah.
We'd steal it from the fence.
Right. See if there, will you come back? Does any members of the public like to speak about this application? Anyone left on Zoom? I just see Chris on Zoom.
No, I, I just commend your, your efforts and your successful business.
Thank you.
Abby, has there been any issues or, I suppose, of parking on barn door hills causing traffic issues?
So I haven't heard of anything, but I.
I don't think so. I mean, I, there's, yeah.
I know we, we don't, not being required one farm store to post a sign that says no parking on a particular street. Is that necessary here, you think or not?
I don't think so.
All right. That's, oh, anybody else? Anything else?
That's it.
I don't need to take a lot of time, but.
Please come up to the.
I just, my name's Jackie.
Just, just come on up so they can get you on the microphone.
Yeah, I just, and I'm sorry I haven't been over to the store yet, but I, my concerns are.
Just leave it, Andrew, please.
Oh, my, I live on barn door hills and my name's Jackie. And I agree with this gentleman over here about the character of the town changing. Been here for over 30 years. And when we first moved to Granby, being in the valley anyway, we just moved further out to enjoy the rural character and all that stuff. There were so many more farms or dairy farms. You all know that. And now that's all disappearing. I know there have to be changes. There, you know, you need growth. You want to improve your tax base and all that sort of thing. I think that farm store is a great idea that looks as though, although I couldn't really tell because I can't really see it and I haven't been able to check the, the report here. But, you know, they know they need parking and the thing, the store has really taken off. People speak very highly of it and everything. I just haven't had a chance to get in there during the hours it's open. My concern is again, we are in the center of a game preserve, land preserve. There's so much, we see bears in our yard several times a week. You know, we hear the coyotes, we see, see all the other kinds of wildlife that are around here, but they use our, our property for sort of a conduit through all the houses and things that have gone up in the area. When we first, and our house was an old house, we didn't build the house. We bought an old house specifically for that reason rather than to develop at the area. And we were told when we moved in there and bought the house that there wouldn't be any building. There was, the property contiguous to us was owned by the town. And within three years, you know, this bucolic setting changed irrevocably by, and we had to endure all the logging and everything for that hillier way that went in. There was a house down the road past us that was put in with, you know, a huge place that just was sold again recently. And there's also something a little further down the road that is set back, but they, I don't know what they're doing in there. But it is a concern with all the traffic. And I'll tell you, the traffic plows down that road. The Amazon trucks, the, the oil trucks delivering heating oil, the, you know, the trucks that come to the farm to, you know, take care of the barn and deliver hay and everything else. I mean, people just wail down that road. And there is a little hill, once you get on that first hill, that hillier ways over there, there is another little hill just past the house at the, at the equestrian center. And his mention of people being on the road, I know they need parking, but people coming out of there also have to be careful. There are cyclists, there are people walking, people visiting like around holidays or visiting family that live in the area. They walk with strollers on that road and children. There's horses there. I mean, you, you know what it's like. And it's only a matter of time till something really terrible happens. I, it was hard for me to tell from the picture exactly how the parking is going to look, but it looks like he said it's going to be set back and added on there and they're going to have egress to getting in and out of there easily. So that's a good point. But I, I am really concerned about the growth in town, the growth on our road. Everything's being sold off, built up and the traffic, the people, the services, the taxes have gone up. You know, I just, it's just, we're going to turn into not just Simsbury, but you know, who knows what else? And it's, it's just concerning to people who, you know, are always touting the rural character of Granby and that being the reason that they moved here. You see that in Granby Living and in the paper and, you know, everywhere else when you're just talking to people. So that's only my concern. I don't have a big problem about your store or your parking, but you guys need to kind of put the brakes on with some of this, you know, quest for an increased tax base. Okay? And the concept of, well, we all like to see a lot less of it. But I could open your taxes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
I, I just quickly, I mean, I guess what I would say is that one of the things that's been so enjoyable about this store to us, which was a total, you know, we opened it and hung a sign up and thought, who knows if people are going to come. And the thing that has probably been the most satisfying is the people who grew up in Granby or still in Granby were there three times a week and they're, the overwhelming sentiment from my perspective has been that this, I mean, people say some version of this feels like us all the time, doesn't, so. I think if, if there's an anxiety or a concern about whether or not this is moving away from a, you know, an, an impulse to preserve what is so special about Granby, I would just invite some people to come and see it. And we are deeply invested in, in making it feel like it's a, a part of the landscape. There's a beautiful garden that people spend time in and sit in. So I understand the anxiety or the, the concern, but I would just invite people to come and actually see what's happening there.
I would just like to add to his comments. Whereas, you know, I think it's great in farm store and I understand that people that are running these agricultural farms and trying to make a living at it, they need something, they need to keep adding things, just like Bushy Hills, you know, they've got the cidery and they're having dinner and breakfast and bands and all that sort of stuff to try to stay alive. I understand that. I think that's great to a certain extent, but I really worry about, you know, well, one thing I should mention, he's talking about people that have lived here all their lives. I know people that have lived here all their lives too. And they're, but they're disgusted and upset with the turn that Granby's taking with all this development, like the monstrosity downtown and everything. I don't know if those, they were supposed to be, and this is getting off the track, they're supposed to be a low income housing. And when the sign went up, it said luxury apartment. So I don't know what that's all about. But, you know, you've really got to, you must love Granby too, and you've got to try to, to put the brakes on some of this stuff. My point was that people that have lived here all their life are really upset. I know a lot of people, well, handful of people because I don't know everyone in town, have, you know, left the area for other small towns and stuff. So, you know, you guys are here, you have the sway. I know that all this stuff is, in these meetings and all this stuff, they're usually just like a bump in the road for the developers. They just have to wait it out. They've got the deep pockets and everything else and it always happens anyway. So I just hear that by two cents.
We follow our regulations, which are well developed.
Sure you do.
And citizens are, we take input all the time on regulations. We have a plan of conservation and development. I tell the public, which will be reviewed in the next year and a half. Several members of this commission have said, I suggest reading because that's the book guys are telling.
Well, that's one thing putting it right is another thing putting it into action. And I'm just worried about the ants, where are sitting up? And that's where the draw is for all those people that come to like the, you know, the Clinton hike and stuff on the weekends or whatever.
Thank you for comments.
That's all. Nothing else to say.
Anything else? Any other comments? That's good. Just ask me.
Yep.
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. The commission has 65 days to make its decision. However, we'll be discussing later in June. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. We have item number seven, which is receive applications for scheduled hearings. Abby, I see we have three that at least came in.
Yes.
Go through those four.
The first application is seeking amendment to zoning regulation, section 3.8, the industrial zone. And the applicant is specifically looking to add a new section to allow personal services by special permit. The second application is a special permit for garage over 1,000 square feet for 200 Silver Street. And the third one is a special permit modification for 175 Barn Door Hills Road hours of operation. So with the timeframe needed to refer the text amendment to CROG, we could schedule that one for July 9.
Okay.
And then the other two could be on for June 25th, which is the next meeting.
So we'll have item A, July 9th, and B and C for our next meeting in June. Commissioner, do you have that?
Yep.
Okay.
July 9th, I will not be here.
And we also have the continuation of the K Street application in our next meeting.
Yes.
You say that on that June what?
25th.
Thank you. And I mentioned it last time, but Vice Chair Myers, as long as he's here, I will not be here the 25th of June. So you can have the gavel, as they say. All right. Anything else? Next, I was item eight, consideration of applications. We're, the commission has concluded the public hearing. We've concluded two public hearings tonight. One was for the building addition on Sammerbrook Street. I looked, there was two, two points here. One was on the approval of the building and the waiver on the pavement. So I, my comment is I think the addition falls within the current building and fits to what the applicant wants to do. And if they meet their parking requirements, which they do, I don't see an issue with the gravel. That's my, my two comments. But.
I'm fine with it.
Definitely no issue here. The applicant, the property is always well maintained. I expect that.
I think the only thing I heard from staff is we would have to have, subject to drainage or at least town engineer looking at the drainage and addressing any comments or so.
Yeah. And do you mind making specific to that the outdoor storage?
Yeah. And that item six on your memo is not included. That's a separate.
Yep.
All right. Anything else?
I have no issue with the application.
Sorry, Chris, I keep forgetting. I keep chiming in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
So I'll entertain a, a motion?
I'll motion, we approve the application seeking a site plan modification for a 3,000 square foot building addition for property located at 557 Sammerbrook Street, C2 Zone. Staff comments one, two, four, and five in the memorandum from the Director of Community Development and Planning to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 7, 2024 are to be addressed to the satisfaction of staff and detailed in the site plan. Staff comment number three outlining the request by the applicant for a waiver of the need for additional paving of the gravel area detailed in the plan is approved. Approval is contingent upon final review of the drainage plan and calculations by the town engineer and the applicant agreeing to address any comments or findings. Item number six is not included in the approval.
And the second? We have a motion and a second as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next hearing we closed was application for site plan modification for parking for our farm store on Barn Door Hills. You just finished that one. I think it's a good position for a business to be in. And for one, I would like to have, not have cars parking on Barn Door Hills. So I think it's good to get them off and the applicant has thought about it and has worked with the town that did the driveway apron and sightlines and things. So any other comments?
No, I agree with your comments.
So I do have a comment. Want to start by stating that I'm very supportive of the application. Great to see the business thriving. But I also want to comment that with progress does come sacrifice, listening to some of the public comment tonight, also reading the letter from the individual who sent it and make part of the file. Businesses placed in residential areas do have an impact. I can tell you firsthand, this business is impacting the residents on the street. There's been a significant increase in traffic on barn door on Saturday and Sunday days where residents used to get a break from typical heavy weekday traffic. Again, progress comes with sacrifice. While I am supportive, this is just yet another test of us and the hard work we have to do to balance these farms and their needs, which find themselves clashing with residents. We've heard it with multiple applications now that have come before us and this one's no different. So more of a statement, again, supportive, but it, it has impacted the residents of Barn Door Hills very negatively. It's a shame.
I think this commission has, over the years, embraced most of the, all the farms here in the town of Granby and have allowed and a lot of latitude and a lot of growth. And I'm very supportive of the applicant. I've heard great things. I've never been there, but I've heard that it's always congested and there's no sense in going because you can't find a place to park. So maybe this will help alleviate that. And I do have empathy for the people that live on that road. I mean, there's not much, it's a farm store and we're, we're allowing it to prosper.
I have empathy too, but I also live on a road that is, other places get busy on Saturdays and Sundays too. So I do see the difference and it does impact you, but it's good to see activity and, and progress.
Just a cautionary tale.
If I look back to the first public hearing I ever sat on, which was the one for Los Angeles Vineyards, and I think that what Commissioner Myers said is absolutely right. We do, we have balance and we, we shouldn't pretend there's no cost for people in the neighborhood. Of course, they, they're clearly can be. But this, this is, this is a business that's going to keep that land, farmland, and I think I feel, I feel the need to supply.
Okay. I think the commission was in consensus then. I think that if, so the condition I would want to include as staff would be installation of a driveway apron satisfactory to Granby, Parker Public Works, is that correct? Otherwise, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, we approve the application seeking a site plan modification for expanded parking for a farm store located at 175 Barn Door Hills Road. Application approval is contingent upon the applicant applying for a driveway permit, paving and apron to be approved in size and design by the building department and public work staff.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right. Item nine, staff reports and correspondence. Abby, anything to report?
Just a couple of quick updates. We did have a walkthrough of 83 Sammerbrook Street last week, the Freshies property for interested proposers to come tour the property, ask questions. We will be hosting another one on Monday and proposals are due July 10. We have also issued an RFP for Granby Center master plan. So that's work that's coming out of the Granby Center Advisory Committee and those proposals are due July 18th. So looking forward to hopefully getting some good responses.
All right. Ten, commission reports. Any commissioner, any comments?
I have a comment on all the, the K Street issue. I noticed, because I go over to Canton for various reasons, I noticed a few years ago they installed what they call speed tables on K Street. My, my observation is that they definitely work. They definitely slow, they slow me down, I know that. I'm sure they slow others down. I guess I would wonder what our police and local people would think of the speed tables because it's a, the traffic does go awfully fast on that road at, at some times. Not everybody, but certainly some people are hitting 50, 55, 60. And it's, I don't, I don't blame the gentleman for wondering about the safety of taking a walk. but certainly some people are hitting 50, 55, 60. And it's, I don't, I don't blame the gentleman for wondering about the safety of taking a walk.
I agree. In fact, uh, I don't go to try to avoid K Street for a lot of reasons when I go over to that camp, right? I went over there, uh, it was a while ago, but I hadn't been in a while and those speed tables showed up. It actually makes it quite obnoxious to diversify street.
Yeah, it does.
I, I hope that that encourages people to stop doing it, although I think people are pretty focused when they want to get somewhere. But I love the technique and had thought the exact same thing. I think that would be a great technique to apply as part of our street strategy, uh, on pass through streets. We have several, uh, barn door being one of them that are designated scenic and have very low speed limits, no curbs, no sides. They would really benefit from some, uh, measures to slow down, uh, folks. Uh, wonder if, uh, if that could be a dialogue as well. I agree with you.
Yeah. Should talk about it.
I was going to say, East Street is the place I would like to think about that.
I think everybody's street, when you live there, you know.
You always think that.
So you do everybody's street. However, there are known, uh, they're on a list of cut through streets in town as opposed to residential cul-de-sacs, off street neighborhoods and stuff that, so yes, I agree, everybody's street, nobody wants cars, but there are absolutely streets in this town that are designated cut throughs to get from point A to point B.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
I, by the way, don't live on East Street. I just live near it and I drive on it and I think that people do drive too fast on this street.
And they put up one of those, um, speed control radar signs. But I think that has some impact. Uh, people see that and maybe it provides them a realization of how fast they're going when they hit the sign until they pass the sign.
The signs will be a place to review each day. They're going to leave somewhere else.
Yeah.
I mean, I think traffic, I mean, I, many, 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 many years ago, took a traffic engineering class and everything you're saying, there's a science behind it.
Yeah.
Um, and there's reasons why you do and why you don't. I can't answer them because I didn't do the whole class. Um, you know, it's something that, you know, that's, you know, bring up for a traffic engineer when, where they're hoping. And I, I heard the comments tonight and, you know, Granby's part of the region. And we have a thing 15 minutes from here called Bradley International Airport. That airport is expanding. They're putting a new addition in there, new gates. People are going to be kicking 219, K Street, Barn Door Hills, all the roads to get to the airport. And we're part of that region. Um, and it's inevitable that that's going to, that road in the airport is going to impact us in positive and negative ways.
Yep.
You could say that about lots of other things. And, um, you know, I think we have to look, uh, I mentioned the plan of conservation development. There's a thing in there about dangerous intersections. It's been in there for how long? And I haven't seen anything really done about it. One is by, uh, Barn Door and Church. That's, that's really treacherous. And I know I, uh, heard from the chief that they were evaluating that we said, but there's, there's going to have to be some things looked at as the beach in as a whole. Even if, uh, every landlord said they weren't going to do any more development, there's nothing in town, that growth still comes around. Points well taken, everyone.
All right. That's it. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have motion second. All adjourned.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We are adjourned.